Okay, we'll call this meeting in order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Allen, here. Green, here. LaFleur.
Here.
Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Rindell.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
See everybody here tonight? We move on to approval of minutes for the City Council Meeting of November 1st. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Is there any discussion? Be you not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also have the organizational meeting minutes of November 8th. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported also? Is there any comments or questions on those minutes? Be you not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments, which this evening we have no com, uh, no audience at the moment. If somebody does come in, then I will go to them. Otherwise, I will not be going to them on our items for consideration, since they're not here. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? Then a motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion on that? Be you not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
What's been made and supported? There's no discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration. We have five this evening, the first one being consideration of special event activity, community tree lighting, and Santa Parade. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving the Santa Parade route and events associated with the community tree lighting and Santa Parade, as well as the Kris Kringle Market that is part of the overall event. Two years ago, the city made major changes to our tree lighting event and Santa Parade, including shutting down Main Street for the parade, keeping Main Street closed from Water to Monroe for about an hour to two hours after the parade, having burn barrels up there within the, moving the tree to the area between just north of now the yoga studio at the municipal park there and parking lot. Last year due to COVID, we weren't able to do those same festivities, so this year the committee has gotten back together. They've been meeting and we're bringing pretty much everything back as it was two years ago, with a couple, a couple minor changes. One, the parade route to give a little visibility, more visibility to rags and the things that they're doing there. Will end at Park Street and turn right and go down Park to Stone, and then if you're coming back to the tree lighting, you'll turn right. If you're heading back to Fire Hall or out of town, you'll turn left. So that's one change from two years ago. The Kris Kringle Market, a lot of feedback was that they had a lot of people, especially seniors, up there during the daytime when the market wasn't open, so the market hours will be 2:00 to 7:00, and I think last year it didn't open until about 4:00. A lot of people like to get out during the daytime rather than at night after dark, so that's a little earlier. Other than that, a lot of the same Christmas cash program through the EDC and Rec Department and Tifa. We have the stage will be up on the brick pavers. Pat Ackley will be the emcee again. We'll have the high school choir singing outside and the community choir or some form of it inside in the banquet hall. So with that, there's a couple motions, but if you have any questions, I think there's several members of the committee here tonight that could answer your questions.
Is there a motion before discussion?
I make a motion to approve the new Santa Parade route along Main Street from Forest to Park Street on Saturday, December 4th, 2021, at 5:30 PM with the community tree lighting to be held at the Pocket Park on Main Street and authorize the city clerk to apply to MDOT for the road closure and across the road banner.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion on this? Glad to see we were able to have it again. Missed it last year and the, was it 19 was such a great year for us. Got a lot of people out and it was such a nice place to hold it, so hopefully everybody comes out again for the. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have another motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the special event application from Manesi's Banquet Center. Choose a portion of the municipal parking lot for the Kris Kringle Market from noon to 8:00 PM Saturday, December 4th, 2021.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion on the?
You know, I just further, want to further state what you said, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, it's been a privilege to be on this committee, to plan this, and the fantastic folks that have just come alongside each other to build, make this event for this community. And really, the vision for it is a true, like, everybody talks about the Hallmark movies, but it's a true Hallmark movie moment for the city of Richmond where we all come together as a community. I mean, really, just thinking about it, the last time we held it, I get a little emotional about it because we didn't have that opportunity last year, and we get this opportunity this year, and I'm so excited, and I hope as many folks, everybody just comes out and really just has this great moment as a community together.
Very good. Anything else? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Let's hope for snow to really touch it off. Item number two is consideration of special event application, mobile food vendors, Teresa Manesi. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to request, or scheduled to consider two requests from Teresa Maniachi to host a mobile food vendor, Great Lakes Smokehouse, at the Richmond Flower Shop. Her first request is to host them the night of the tree lighting, which is December 4th, from 2:00 to 8:00 PM, so the same, roughly the same hours as the Kris Kringle Market. She's hoping that it will be a draw, that people will go from the Kris Kringle Market down to the Flower Shop. Her second request is that during Reindeer Days that they have down at the Flower Shop, which is December 12th, they get such a large crowd, that'd be her hope that they would have the mobile food vendor to help feed the people that are down there.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Before?
I make a motion to approve the special event request for a mobile food vendor from the Richmond Flower Shop to have one mobile food vendor, Great Lakes Smokehouse, parked at the Richmond Flower Shop, 69001 Main Street, on Saturday, December 4th, 2021, from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Is there any discussion? Of course, I have discussion. I'm not quite sure why we would support this. It's not, there's not a special event at the Flower Shop. We also have multiple restaurants, again, in that two, three-block area. The only thing is, is that one of the closest restaurants to this location, I believe, closes at 3:00 on Saturday. So I'm not really totally against it, but again, it's not a special event for this particular business, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against this. Any other comments?
I guess my comment would be, so she's asking to have it parked at the Flower Shop. Would we want it parked by the Kris Kringle because of where the actual?
I don't want it at all.
Well, I, okay.
So don't look at me and ask me, you know?
So other council members, I, just hundreds of people show up to our December event. There is no physical way the restaurants can handle the capacity with the hundreds of people that come. So they, they will, people will be going to the restaurants, but then there's, they're just not all gonna get seated and turned around in enough time with hundreds of people.
Possibly. Possibly. Talk to the, talk to all those owners along there and ask them that question. It's not the answer I get from them, so. Have you talked to the restaurant owners and asked them?
About this event, no. I have not.
About any of the events, really?
I have talked to.
I'll tell you, no. It's unfair labor, it's unfair practice, as far as they're concerned, of bringing somebody from out of town. That's, I mean, I, it's very, I've made myself very clear on that. It's based on the conversations I have with all three restaurants, and now we also have the party store now has their food, which is right in that same block. That's the only reason I go against it, for the, for that particular reason. That, and it's not a special event there. The second motion, or the second motion that's in front of us will be a special event at her place of business.
The reindeer, yes.
Yeah.
Her Flower Shop, but I, she also is hosting the Kris Kringle Market and putting that on as well.
At the different location, not at the Flower Shop.
Well, but I guess she, there's some mixed signals sometimes sent with the food vendors, and because she owns the property of the Flower Shop, she is not here, but my guess would be that she thought she needed to put it at her business to keep it away. I, okay.
At least, if you don't mind, I'll answer that question.
Sure, interject.
In speaking to her, her idea for the mobile food vendor that night was to try and draw people down to the Flower Shop.
Down to her business.
That I don't think she wanted it.
At the Kris Kringle?
At the Kris Kringle Market, right. That was the impression I got.
Okay, and, and, yeah, I would just, okay. Because some of the business owners have stated that they would like to have it on their private property, but I, I guess I wouldn't see an issue with having one at the Kris Kringle Market because that's where the crowd will be, and the crowd would stop by for food because there's going to be hundreds of people there.
I understand. Any other comments? Be you not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against?
Nay.
One nay, three nays? Motion does pass. Okay, now we have the second request. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special event request for a mobile food vendor from the Richmond Flower Shop to have one mobile food vendor, Great Lakes Smokehouse, parked at the Richmond Flower Shop, 69001 Main Street, on Saturday, December 12th, 2021, from, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM in association with Reindeer Days.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion on this?
Just as you said, Mr. Mayor, it's a special event request for her business, and I appreciate her encouraging to draw a crowd and make her event that much more.
I still have a problem with this, with the times. The restaurant is open, again, directly almost, well, it's kitty corner from, from their business, and again, it's gonna take away from their business, according to them. And it's open basically during their hours of operation, 10:00 AM to 4:00. They are open till 3:00 on Saturday, as I stated before. But it is a special event. And I, I think it's quite a draw. It's on her property. Have a very hard time with it myself, but I'm gonna go with this one, because it is on her property, it is a special event on her property, and it's one food vendor. I'd rather they didn't, but I can see why they are requesting the, the approval. I want this to be like I'm softening up down there on that end of the table.
Never, sir.
No, no, no.
Thank you, thank you very much. I feel better now. But in this case, I would definitely support this. Is there any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would just agree with what you said, and I agree, this is their, kind of their event, bringing people into town, so with that, I'm in favor of it too, because they're, if they didn't have the event, there might not necessarily be people just going to the other, well, they'll still go to the other restaurants, but I think it'll be a win-win. Some people will go to that event for food, and hopefully some will go to the local restaurants as well, depending on their preference. Some people like to quickly grab something, some people like to sit down, so I think it'll work for, for everybody.
Anything else, anybody? Be you not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We wish her well on those days. We move on to consideration of special event activity, request to hang banners, Richmond Little League. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request for an across-the-road banner from Richmond Little League. Last year, they went to two banners. They have their old banner that just promotes the Richmond Little League registration, and then they had purchased a new banner promoting both registration for baseball and softball through Richmond Little League. So last year, we put two banners up, one at the Fire Hall and one at the original location, and that's what they're requesting again this year.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the across-the-road banner request from Richmond Little League for two banners for the registration event from January 3rd, 2022, through January 17th, 2022.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Is there any discussion on this? Be you not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of special event activity, oh, X that out. Number four is consideration of adopting Resolution 2021-24 Township Code Enforcement. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Council is scheduled to consider approving an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement between the city of Richmond and Richmond Township to have the city of Richmond Police Department assist the township code enforcement officer with their duties in conducting code enforcement. We had originally entered into these agreements and had done a one-year agreement, I think, one or two one-year agreements. Then we switched to three-year agreements, and this will be entering the third three-year agreement, and it's going well, and we did purchase, as you see in the background brief, signs for our cars when we go out there to do code enforcement. And again, the township handles all of the code enforcement duties. Our police are there to offer safety while they go out and serve the paperwork, or to be able to be a witness should things go wrong with, while they're serving those, those papers. So it's been working well for both sides. Originally started with Cindy Grigna when she was supervisor, now Chris DeVos is supervisor, and he requested that, he would like to see this continue.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-24, a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Richmond and Richmond Township to have the city of Richmond Police Department assist the township code enforcement officer.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Is there any discussion?
Just a comment, sir. Anytime that local municipalities can work together to help each other is a fantastic thing, and this has been a great symbiotic relationship for the past couple years.
Any other comments? Be you not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number five is consideration of adopting Resolution 2021-25 Compliance with Public Act 152. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider adopting Resolution 2021-25, a resolution that allows the city to comply with Public Act 152 of 2011. Each year, as we enter into our new year for health care, we, excuse me, have to pass a resolution according to Public Act 152, and it gives us three options. We can either adopt the hard cap, adopt the 80%, 20% rule, or opt out and then do whatever we've done, chosen to do. Since the inception of Public Act 152, we have always chosen that third option, as we've negotiated over the years, the amount our employees pay for their health care. So we're requesting again that you adopt the resolution, let's opt out of Public Act 152.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-25 Electing to Comply with the Provisions of Public Act 152 of 2011, exercising the city's right to exempt itself from the requirements of, of the act for the next succeeding health care plan year.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Is there any discussion? This has been going on since 2011 or 2012?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not sure when the first one had to be adopted, but yeah, since at least 2012.
So I'll make a, can I make a comment, sir, to that?
Sure.
It, it came out when I first was elected, which is 10 years ago now, and while I, I thought I saw wisdom at the time, now, being in this position 10 years later, I'm, just want to make a statement that the state does, really doesn't have a right to tell us what to do with our health care and how to treat our employees, but I do appreciate that there was escape. So I, in the beginning, I, I agreed with the state on this, but now, growing wise in my years, this is, this should be repealed, and we'll support our right to exempt ourselves from it.
Very good. Any other comments? Be you not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Miss Ladies, manners from the City Manager, sir?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Okay. Council comments? Dennis?
Good to see you back.
Welcome back.
Thanks for all the support.
Welcome back. And again, we want to thank Jim Scholz for taking your seat for six months, and appreciate the, his knowledge and his previous experience on council two different times, over 17 or 19 years, whatever it was, but glad to have you back.
Thank you.
Rob?
Nothing.
John?
Nothing.
Emily?
Nothing, thank you. I do have a comment, because I wasn't here to say goodbye to Counsel Scholz, but I appreciate his time when he was here and that he's always willing to step up. It's great to have Counsel LaFleur back, and I also want to say thank you to our city clerk, Karen Stagel, for the election. Just during, this is a time where elections are in the forefront of the media, but our clerks are, just do a fantastic job, and especially ours, who operates our elections with tremendous integrity, and that we appreciate that of her. You're welcome.
You're here.
And then, Christmas cash, folks, businesses get involved in this. That's my EDC shout-out for the night.
I concur. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I have some things to announce here. There's some new stuff. Our tree lighting and Santa Parade is Saturday, December 4th. So from 2:00 to 7:00, we're gonna have the Kris Kringle Market, that is both outside and possibly inside at Manesi's Banquet Center. From 4:00 to 8:00 o'clock, the Historical Society will have the village open, and there will be a visit with Mrs. Claus and some activities there, and that's from 4:00 to 8:00. Santa Parade will begin at 5:30. It'll start on Main Street at South Forest. Christmas Carol is at the Veterans Pocket Park. That's the, the park that is in between Manesi's Banquet Hall and, or I'm sorry, the yoga store now, and it used to be Yoga on the other side.
Shabby.
Shabby Pig. Okay. But that's where it's located by the North Main Parking Lot. Hot chocolate and light refreshments. Santa's gonna arrive at 6:00, and we will be lighting our Christmas tree by Little Miss Richmond, and then there'll be a Christmas cash drawing. We will leave Main Street closed from Water Street to Monroe Street for the festivities, and of course, there will be pictures with Santa following the tree lighting inside at the Banquet Center, and there will be vote, photos that will be taken, and of course, you can take your own. And every child who visits with Santa will receive a small gift from the city. So anyhow, if you have any more questions on that, there's a lot going on all that day. It's 727-3064 to get ahold of the Parks and Recreation Department. There are applications, if you'd like to be in the parade, that you can also, is that online?
Yes, it's also online on the city's website and Rec Department's Facebook page.
Okay. So you can get ahold of the city, and if you'd like to be in the parade. Remember, golf carts are gonna be allowed for the parade, as long as they're 50% decorated in the Christmas manner. So, but you need to sign up with Parks and Recreation to be in that parade, and as, so far, they only have two, according to my daughter, so we need more. Light up Main Street that night. Lois Wagner Memorial Library will have a mitten tree collection that started November 1st and goes through December 13th. They're collecting gloves, mittens, scarves, and hats for children and adults. Just drive, drop by the library or give them a call at 727-2665. Also, the Friends of the Lois Wagner Memorial Library is having its 26th Annual Christmas Cookie Sale. These are homemade cookie, cookies, and donated by members of the Richmond community. This will be held on December 10th from 3:00 to 7:00, right there at the Lois Wagner Memorial Library. Again, if you have any questions, 727-2665. Did I cover them all, Rob?
Yep.
I think I got them all. Okay, and I'd just like to say, the City Manager and I were invited to the VFW here in Richmond on Veterans Day, and it was in honor of their 75th anniversary also, and so we represented the city, and we had all passed that resolution, and we gave them the resolution, which they'll be displaying there at the post. It was a, it was a, they had the State Commander and the District Commander also were there, and I'm not quite sure, I think it was the auxiliary, I believe that was a, an auxiliary person that sat on the other side of us. I didn't get to meet him, but.
Yeah, no.
Their auxiliary is, is very big throughout the state, but also at our local VFW. You don't have to be a veteran, only support veterans, so they're always asking for help to join the auxiliary there. We go to, today, of course, is the 15th. We have an EDC meeting on the 18th at 7:00. We have a Tifa meeting on the 24th at 7:00, right here at City Hall. On the 24th also, the library will be closing at 5:00 PM, and then City Hall, Library, and Community Center will be closed for Thanksgiving Day holiday, and reopen on the 29th on that Monday. The last day of yard waste collection right now is November 30th. Mr. City Manager, did we find anything out from?
I have not yet.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, it looks like the leaves all came down pretty good this last storm.
I've been kind of watching, and so with this cold snap, a lot of them are down.
Yeah, yeah. We had talked about possibly having to extend that, if possible, with waste management, but after that last storm, I know it cleaned my trees out really good, and no, one was really hanging on, so hopefully we can get through for the next few weeks here. Is there anything else that we need to put on the calendar at all? Be you not, we move on to our closed session this evening. We need a motion to go into closed session.
I make a motion to convene into closed session in accordance with Section 8A of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act 267 of 1976, as amended for the purpose of considering a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager as requested by the city manager.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Is there any discussion? Roll call, Vol, please.
Green?
Yes.
LaFleur?
Yes.
Ms. Stravich?
Yes.
Rindell?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Does pass, we will go into closed session. Okay, we need a motion to go back into open session.
I make a motion to reconvene into open session.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion? Be in that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? We're back in open session here. Okay, do we, we move on to other business, which we have one item, city manager evaluation. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve the city manager's evaluation results. City Council has completed the city manager evaluation with the input from all councilors. City manager's evaluation placed the manager between effective to very effective.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Discussion. We want to thank John again for a very, very good year of helping us do the business of the city, as per usual. It doesn't get old. It's just, we really appreciate the fact that we can trust you explicitly. And we hope that you'll choose to stay with us for a number of years and we just see better things, good things happening with the city over the next year or two. And we want you to be there with the administration, leading the charge. So.
Thank you. I'll just take a moment. I appreciate all of the comments and the evaluations that all the council members filled out. And to kind of echo the mayor's statements, I'm looking forward to a lot of things that are happening here in town. And it's always nice to work with this council. It's very stable, and I probably don't thank you enough and the community enough for the stability. All you have to do is kind of watch and look at some other communities and, you know, see their meetings and look at ours. I am very fortunate to have the council that I work for, and I commend you all as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, council? Be in that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us.